Comments, including criticism about policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or acts or missions of the city council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a city council, successor agency, management of Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intimidating, oppressive, or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor, I'd like to note that we have a council member joining us via teleconference. His location is, council member Bowders' location is published on the agenda. Council member Bowders, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, and the agenda is posted at your location?
It is, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, roll, council member Bowders?
Here.
Council member Carr?
Present.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
And Mayor Welch?
Here, item three is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for this agenda? Seeing and hearing none. Item four is public comment on closed session items only. Any members of the public wishing to make comment on closed session items only can do so now for two minutes. Going once, going twice. Seeing no members of the public wishing to make comment, madam clerk, I now close public comment. We will take items five, six, seven, eight, and will report out of closed session. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:02 PM. We are adjourned to closed session.
Recording stopped.
See you in a minute. Oh, it'll be easy for me. I'll be there before you.
The time is 7:10. We have returned from closed session. Mr. Kennedy, do you mind reporting out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. There was no reportable action taken in closed session tonight.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the time is still 7:10, and this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting, the City of Emeryville, acting as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Meeting starts in five minutes.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
This meeting of the City of Emeryville, the successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is being conducted in person at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. I would like to note that the city council welcomes comments, including criticisms about the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city, or of the acts or missions of the city council. Speakers shall not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a city council, successor agency, management of the Emeryville Services Authority, or related meeting. The city is committed to maintaining a workplace free of unlawful harassment and is mindful that city staff regularly attend council meetings. Discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Fair Employment and Housing Act such as statements or conduct that is hostile, intending oppressive or abusive is per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to note that council member Bowders is joining us via teleconference. His agenda, his location is printed on the agenda, and council member Bowders has confirmed that the agenda is posted at the location. For the roll call, council member Bowders?
Here.
Is that here?
Okay, council member Carr?
Present.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Present.
And Mayor Welch?
Here, item three is approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion for the approval for the final agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion to second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have ex parte communications to report for this agenda?
None here.
Seeing and hearing none. Member Bowders, none for you. Thank you. Item five is public comment for the consent agenda, and item's not on the agenda. If any member of the public wished to comment on the consent agenda, and item's not on the agenda for this specific one, you can do so now for two minutes. Going once. Everyone's being shy. All right. Seeing no members of the public wishing to make public comment, madam clerk, I am closing public comment. Item six is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. If no one would like to pull an item, do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item seven, we do have one action item this evening. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency approving the form and authorizing distribution of a preliminary official statement in connection with the offering and sale and tax allocation, refunding bonds, and approving related documents and actions. Who do we have from staff that would like to touch on that? Lawrence, thank you.
Just a waiver of approval.
Yes, would anyone? We do have a request from a member to waive presentation. Would members be agreeable to that?
Yes, no.
Agreeable. Thank you, Lawrence. Sorry to make you walk so far.
I move approval of the resolution.
I second.
We do have a motion, but before we call for the roll, I would like to call for public comment because it is an action item. If any member of the public is wishing to comment on action item 7.1, can do so now for two minutes. Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, we do have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:19 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Madam Clerk, the time is still 7:19 PM. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Emeryville City Council. We're still here at 1333 Park Avenue here in Emeryville, California. My previous comments regarding proper meeting behavior from those attending is still, still stands. Madam Clerk, I would also still like to note your previous comments about member Bowders participating remotely and having the agenda posted still stand as well. And all members of the city council who are here are still present. And then that brings us to item three, the approval of the final agenda. Members, do we have a motion for the final agenda for the city council meeting?
I'll approve.
I'll second.
We've got a motion to the second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item four, we have no special orders of the day. Item five, announcement of commission and committee vacancies, madam clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you very much. Item six is council members' special announcements and reports on meetings in attendance. Members, do any of you have any reports that you'd like to share?
None.
Member Bowders? All right, I don't have anything. Item seven is city manager report.
I just wanted to announce the community services department has a couple of events coming up. The Pool of Pumpkins on Saturday, 10/19, from 1:00 to 3:00 at the ECCL pool. Free to swim, and then $8 for a pumpkin and decorating table. And then we also have Movies in the Park at Hootune Park, Friday, 10/25. Begins at sunset, and the movie is Nightmare Before Christmas.
Wonderful, thank you, Pedro. Item eight is ex parte communications. Members, do any of you have any ex parte communications to report for the city council meeting agenda?
I have one.
Yes, please.
For item 11.1, I had a discussion with Upside Foods regarding the noise waiver ordinance, or noise waiver request.
All right, thank you. Any other members with ex parte communications to report? Yep?
Not really, but there was a communication about arts, the selection of the artists, so that I got it from one of the members on the Public Arts Committee.
All right, thank you very much. Member Bowders, anything for you?
No.
Thank you very much, and I have nothing to report. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda, and item's not on the agenda. If any member of the public wishes to make a comment for the consent agenda, or items on the agenda can do so now for two minutes. Anyone? Got such a big crowd, and no one wants to come make public comment. All right, well, seeing no members of the public wishing to comment, we will close public comment. Item 10 is the consent agenda. Members, please review the consent agenda. If any of you would like to pull an item for further discussion, please say so now. If not, do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Item 11, we have one public hearing. We've got a resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville granting a waiver from those ordinance to Upside Foods for work on 14 specified weekends starting November 2nd, 2024, and concluding February 23rd, 2025. There was a typo there. 2025.
Request to waive presentation.
There is a request for, to waive presentation on this item. Members, would you be agreeable to waive presentation on the item? Thank you, Navarre. We were gonna raise presentation on that.
My pleasure.
So this is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, this, oh, the time is 7:23 PM. I am opening this public hearing, and any member of the public wishing to make a comment on this public hearing can do so now for two minutes. All right. Seeing no members of public wishing to make a comment on this public hearing, I, madam clerk, the time is seven, is still 7:23 PM. I close the public comment for this public hearing. Members, I turn to you for deliberation or a waiver, or, sorry, for the, for a motion on the waiver.
Motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. The roll, please.
Council member Bowders?
Aye.
Council member Carr?
Aye.
Council member Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Thank you very much, members. We're moving on to item 12. We have two action items. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the city council of the City of Emeryville approving the purchase of an artwork for the city's annual purchase award program entitled La Zon de Chamine Totem. I think I said that right? Did I say it right?
I hope so.
Oh, thank you. Hey, look at me.
Don't need to come up. I just, she asked if she said the title of your piece correctly.
Oh, look at me, okay. Wonderful. And Amber, welcome very much.
Thank you.
You have something to share?
I have a presentation because we are bringing actually four things we're gonna ask of you tonight.
Wonderful, thank you so much for being here with us.
Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator for the City of Emeryville. Next slide, please. I'm bringing forward tonight a recommendation for the 2024 Purchase Award. There were over 223 artworks in the show from 154 local artists. For those who may not know, these are all artists that work or live in Emeryville. We don't consider works that aren't for sale, anything that's been developed by a city employee, their spouses, or there are any conflicts. Next slide, please. Every year, we have a selection panel that's made up of five members. A local art professional, representative of the PAC, a staff member representing the user group of the works that are installed in city facilities, one member of the celebration of the art, either their board or committee members, and then one community member representing the community at large, reflecting the work of the broader community. Next slide, please. We rank, or they, the panel, ranks their top five works, looking at the aesthetics, the public appeal, the curatorial focus. That's probably the criteria that get the most questions. We usually mean something different than what is elsewhere in the, in the collection. Longevity, we need them to be durable. And then of the top five, 25 top selections, 14 were within one or a selection of one or more panelists. They reviewed those pieces together, and six artists were individually scored. Next slide, please. I think a lot of times the artists that almost made it don't get acknowledged, so I just wanted to say that Scott Donahue, Uzo Nakano, and Gail Tarantino were also in the short list that got ranked, if we could go to the next slide. But recommended tonight is the purchase of, and I'm not gonna try and say it, because I'm gonna offer that Roberto Gastilamundi be, if you, if the panel likes, invited to the panel to be congratulated on his work, if you do choose to move forward with the PAC and selection panel's recommendation to purchase this work. It's a over nine-foot totem, skinny, less than a foot wide, and we are thinking that we would place this in City Hall in the main lobby. And just a few minutes ago, I was reviewing potential sites, and we're thinking right near the front lobby door. So one of the first things you would see as a greeting to City Hall. Next slide, please. Also recommended for honorable mention was Bill Schwab, and you can see a piece of his earlier work here in this building before, and as I said, we're, we will consider artists after they've, it's been five years since their, their purchase. And this was recommended for honorable mention, first honorable mention. Next slide, please. And then Jenny O'Connor with Curved Wall, and this is not a painting, it's painted film over chalk. Pastel was recommended for second honorable mention. And as I mentioned, Roberto and his family are here to be honored, as well as Bill Schwab and his partner. So if, if, just to see how excited everyone is to see about the purchases and to see the action tonight, I point out that they are here. And next slide. We do stipends for the panelists. We have a nice event, you'll all be invited to that. I have talked with the recommended artist. They'll be traveling to Peru and not available when we usually do this in December, so it will probably be pushed to about February, if you were to move forward with the recommendation. We install plaques. The purchase price is as it's at the show. And we have talked about the possibility of needing to further secure the work. It is very tall, it has a very heavy base, but we wanna make sure that we understand the risk associated with a public placement, and may need to actually secure that. So we've asked for additional allocation, both reflecting the purchase price and that possible higher cost installation, and asked for, next slide. The recommendation of the piece, an appropriation of additional $12,850. We, we always have $25,000 in the budget, is a standard practice for this purchase, and we went a little, a little grander this year, so we need additional funds. And to acknowledge past future figure by Bill Schwab and Curved Wall by Jenny O'Connor as the first and second honorable mentions respectively. Thank you.
Any members, any follow-up questions for Amber? No? All right. Well, this is an action item, and so if any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on item 12.1 can do so now for two minutes, please come join us at the podium. Please come join us at the podium.
I just wanted to take advantage of the moment to thank the City of Emeryville, you guys, and thank my wife, because I wouldn't be here without her. And just to know that I am a proud Emeryvillian, and we always look forward to doing work with the city, and I feel very honored to have gotten the prize and to be here with you guys. That's it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any other members of the public wishing to make comment on item twelve point one? Yep? All right. Public comment is now closed. Members, I turn to you for deliberation or a motion.
Brief comment, please.
Ah, Member Bouders?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just wanna commend the folks who put on the Celebration of the Arts. I know it's continuing through almost the end of this month. For the work they've done for over almost thirty-five years now to make this event a huge success, I wanna thank the members of the City Council who attended and participated in that event to show its support, as well as the members of the staff who assist the Public Art Committee and the members of the community who are public artists and have contributed to this event. It was the largest exhibition we've ever had. It was one of the best-attended events, and I've hosted the bar for nine years at this event, and we ran out of wine with an hour to go, which tells you that the desire for art and culture in our community is as strong as it has ever been, and I wanna congratulate each of the artists who are being recognized and to the recipient of the Public Art Prize. Congratulations for your work. Happy to have you as an evil and in our community. I make a motion to approve the recommendations.
Thank you, Member Bouders.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, this was my first time attending Celebration of the Arts as the mayor, and the community feedback was nothing short of just extraordinary. People from all over the region look forward to this event, and I just want to echo Member Bouders' statements of thanking just everyone who is a part of putting on the event every year, our staff. Amber, I know you are, oh, rude. You are a part of this just in so many different ways, more than we can, can count, and our Public Art Committee, everyone who chooses all of our artists, especially the ones who share our home here in Emeryville, who choose to share their talent with us, because that is truly what you're doing. You are sharing your talent with us. Thank you. You are a part of making one of the most celebrated art events in the Bay area region, just something that people look forward to, and that comes, that people come all over from all types of different communities to just be a part of this event with us, and it's really wonderful to see. I luckily was able to sneak just one glass of wine before we ran out, so no, no one worried. The mayor did get her wine, but it was just being able to be in leadership and be a part of the event and play my very small role as the mayor was something that's very near and dear to my heart, and just seeing the, just the overall excitement and very positive energy was very something, something I'll, I'll always remember. And so with that being said, Madam Clerk, we do have a motion and a second. The roll, please. Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Roberto, congratulations. Item twelve point two is introduction, the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties identified as Group Three Amendments, repealing Chapter Two, advertising, and Chapter Eight, gas, water, and electric meters of Title Five, public welfare, in their entirety, sequoia determination, not a project, and exempt pursuant to sequoia guidelines and sections. Mr. Kennedy, hi. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Welch and council members. We have a brief presentation, if you would like, by our special counsel, Margaret Kotzebue, who has a PowerPoint. She's attending remotely, and she can walk us through these various amendments that we're bringing forward as part of Group Three, which will be the last set of revisions to the municipal code as part of the effort to decriminalize the Emeryville Municipal Code. So it is a...
Members, this is, now, we've been through several series of the decrim actions. Do any of you feel it's necessary? Margaret, I'm sorry to bring you on. Member Bouders, I do recognize you. Did you have a comment?
I just have one question. I'm happy to waive the presentation, as we have been over this many times. There were two small ordinance fixes, one related to intoxication, I believe, that are not included in this proposal tonight, so I'm happy to move forward with what we have. I just wanted to check on the time for the ones that have time-specific, the, the, the couple of small changes we made at the last study session. What's the timeline for getting those done?
Margaret, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, actually, I'd like to ask additional questions, because we did include the Exhibit One is the revisions to the intoxication ordinance. Is there additional changes?
Let me just check real quick, because it's not showing up as red line online.
Yeah, we added a section.
Ah, it's in C? Is that what it is?
Yes, maybe it doesn't show up on, it's colored, so maybe in the version you've got, it didn't come across.
Nope, it comes through. So this is completion of all of the items in Section Three of the code then. Okay, so I have no, I have no additional questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Members, are you agreeable to waiving presentation for this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. This isn't, this is an action item, so I'm, am gonna call for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make comment on item twelve point two can do so now for two minutes. I think we have cleared out all of our audience. Okay. Going once, going twice, in case anyone's in the hallway. Nope, all right, public comment is now closed. Members, I return to you for additional deliberation, or do we have a motion on the item? Yes. Member Bouders?
Yeah, I wanna thank the mayor for indulging me for an, a comment, for a comment. So I was the only council member here in twenty twenty when we undertook a special study session in July that year to examine the ways in which the City of Emeryville could be more forward-thinking about how public safety and public safety services interfaced with communities of color. It's a very challenging conversation for many community members to have. It's rooted deeply in the institutional racism that many of the infrastructure pieces and systems in which our society relies upon are rooted, and how they, by design, discriminate against people of color. And we had a really robust conversation about a number of items that council members brought forward. This item was an item I brought forward, which was to really examine the ways in which we could have our code speak our values and not focus on the penal code and the ways in which people can be criminally punished, but to look for ways in which we can obtain community safety through other investments, including our child, early child development center, including investments in our staff and our community, and re-centralizing the municipal code around civil enforcement. And this has been a very long process. I wanna thank prior city attorneys, including Michael Geena, Andrea Visweshwara. I wanna thank Mr. Kennedy. I wanna thank Margaret, Christie Crowell. There's a large number of people who have worked on this process for four-plus years since the council gave its initial direction to do this. By removing things from the penal code, we eliminate opportunities for pretextual stops. We eliminate opportunities for there to be negative engagement, harassment. You know, we, we often talk about how there are inherent tensions between law enforcement and community, in particular, people who have been traditionally overpoliced and under-resourced. But one of the things municipal governments can do, that not many do, is do a deep dive into why we have built a entire infrastructure, a code system around inequality. And through the course of this, I learned a lot of things about Emeryville. I learned that we had ordinances dating back to the fifties, sixties, and seventies that penalized spitting, that penalized not picking up dog poop, that penalized not having a bicycle license. And these are rooted in institutional racism, and they were designed originally for law enforcement personnel to stop people who didn't look like they belonged in our community. And as part of our venture forward, I just wanna say, as someone who's worked on addressing institutional racism, on removing disparities in the way in which the criminal legal system encounters and deals with people in our community, I'm really grateful that we have completed this process, and I'm happy to see it finished before I leave here, as something that was a venture we began a long time ago. I'm grateful to the mayor and the council for indulging me in giving this brief speech, because to me, this is, I'm an extremely important set of things that we've done, that many people will not look at, but have actually materially changed the way our city conducts its business, and I make a motion to approve this item.
Thank you, Member Bouders.
I'll second.
Point of clarification, we're just asking for introduction and waiving the first reading of the ordinance if possible.
That, that will be my motion. I'll waive first reading. Thank you.
Oh, yes. And then...
I'll second that.
All right. I just wanted to note before we call for the roll that this isn't something that's unique to Emeryville as far as having these archaic type of ordinances on the books that continuously can criminalize and actually target communities of color, and we see it all over the nation where they have archaic laws that allow law enforcement to consistently, systemically harass people of color, communities of color, specifically focusing on the black community. We see this a lot in the American South, but unfortunately, California, even in this space that we feel is very liberal, that is forward-thinking, still has these type of issues. And so I appreciate Member Bouders and our council predecessors for being forward-thinking and not leaning on the fact that we do live in a liberal diverse space and thinking that we do not have to look in the mirror sometimes to address some of the historic issues that have played into a lot of the systemic problems that we experience as a nation. Emeryville is a small city, but we continue to be a, in, in my humble opinion, a beacon of hope and an example of what cities can do around forward-thinking, innovative governance. And so I just wanted to note my appreciation for their work as well. And Madam Clerk, we do have a motion and a second on the item. Thank you. This is to read the item by title only.
Yes.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Mora?
Aye.
And Mayor Welch?
Aye. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Welch. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville repealing and replacing various municipal code provisions to eliminate or modify criminal penalties identified as Group Three Amendments, repealing Chapter Two, advertising, and Chapter Eight, gas, water, and electric meters of Title Five, public welfare, in their entirety, sequoia determination, not a project, and exempt pursuant to sequoia guidelines, Section one five three seven eight, subsection B, subsection five, and one five oh six one, subsection B, sub, subsection three. Thank you.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
I second. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Councilmember Bouders?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?